Alright, welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting number one hundred and eight. July thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And today, we are joined by Tavvo, Amayor, Ayo, Bynabas, Clement, Daniel, Gorga, Hogan, Jenny, Kizi, Seron, Tontek, and Vanessa. And let me just admit, Philip as well. From the waiting room, thanks all for being here. I imagine some more people will be joining in, but we can't wait for that. Because today is the monthly Town Hall where we give updates on all the workgroups and their progress. Before going there, a quick overview on what the Ambassador Program even is and what we do. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are all in tune with Singularity Net Mission and Vision, and want to help out, contribute to it. We have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups on a broad spectrum of topics. So for sure, if you're interested in helping out, there's a workgroup suited for just doing that. If you join our Discord server, there's a, yeah, how to get started section there. There's a lot of background information. If you go through that, you'll be fully up to date and ready to get started. Yeah, then before we actually, actually get there to the workgroups and their updates, two quick mentions. One by Vanessa on AGI twenty four. I figured I'd give you the opportunity for this one right at the beginning. Sorry for putting you on the spot, Vanessa, if you don't mind.
Not at all, yeah. For those who don't know, there's a conference coming up in August called AGI twenty twenty four in Seattle. And the AI Ethics Work Group and the Global AI Ethics Initiative are trying to get some virtual stuff going. So the dates are thirteenth to the sixteenth of August. And we also have a pre-conference event on the seventh of August, which is really, really, really soon. So I'm posting the details in the chat. There's a signup sheet for various tasks that we're hoping people will do around things like documentation of breakout rooms. And we're trying to run a chill-out space in the virtual conference just for people to come and, you know, have a chat about AI-related things and just calm it down a little bit. And we're also hoping to run some fishbowl interviews with attendees about what their take is on AI ethics. So the sheet should explain everything. It tells you kind of what skills you might need. We're also going to try and run a kind of quick training session this week for anybody who's interested in actually doing fishbowl interviews. But yeah, I think it's probably because it's summer and people are busy. We haven't had the sign-ups that we thought we'd have. So if you're interested, because it is so soon, please get your name down, ideally by tomorrow morning. Alright, and if anybody's got any questions, you can DM me or message in the AI Ethics Discord channel. Alright, thanks a lot.
And thank you. Alright, one other mention on the agenda before the workgroup updates. And that's this Thursday, I'd tell you to see. And let me verify, yes, tell you to see. There's a workgroup syncing call. We had one a month ago. And earlier today during Governance Work Group, there were, yeah, a couple of topics that will be pushed towards that call. It's basically where the representatives of all workgroups are present and exchanging ideas to learn from each other, prevent reinventing the wheel, and yeah, just make things smooth. So a quick reminder on that one. It's open for anybody to join. If you're not part of a workgroup yet, you can still join in. Alright, then we move to the workgroup updates. And as you can see here on the right side, we have a lot of workgroups. I like, yeah, Tavvo, thanks. Shout out to you for generating these images and the common slides as well. So if there's a workgroup missing, don't blame me. No, but in all seriousness, thanks. It gives a, yeah, pretty solid overview and it just shows how much stuff is going on. And yeah. That brings us to the, to the updates. They're kind of grouped so that we don't have to go to one person, well, in the case of the first group, four times for separate updates, rather than based on the weekly calendar, which we used before. So well, I would say, sorry to put you on the spot, Tavvo, but you created this list, so you kind of put yourself in the spot here to start off.
Yep, that was kind of the intention, to get the hardest part right off the way. Maybe in future, there will be more people sharing these updates, but I guess if I do it once, it could be more effective for now. And so I will start with actually not the same list I put in here. And I start with Treasury Guild, which is basically the overarching of all of these Treasury workgroups. And believe it or not, we started off the month with the ideation of how do we start Iteration Two for all the proposals? And basically, this month, we had three sessions, because it's a bi-weekly session, and it somehow captured three sessions. And we were able to, throughout that time, go through the entire process of Iteration Two, Three, and Four. And also have a retrospective at the end on the consent results. So if you are interested, all of these sessions were recorded and are available in meeting archival or the motherboard to be checked out. And while we had these Treasury Guild calls, we have Treasury Policy Workgroups. And in there, we started the month off with, we had the first policy, idea of how could we improve our budget fitting? And based on that first example, we drafted our way how to review new policies. We created a Google form. And we then had another submission, which was about minimum budgets, which now has gotten a positive review. So there has been some process of how do we now get it more closer to the rectification of all of these policies that we come up. And the final, this week's session was about retrospective on a general of the process. Both Treasury Guild and Policy Workgroup meeting summary is yet to come. And yeah, so another thing what's happening here is you can see Treasury Operations Call. So this is a workgroup that is solely like working on to get all different workgroups and guilds budgets and requests into like a cohesive and formatted form. And also we do the Treasury transaction, so the metadata looks nice and the dashboards look okay to share. And also we are distributing all the rewards to the participants. In the operations itself, we have adopted in outside of vacations. Now this is fully implemented, and this is the first month actually that ended. And we'll start deduct vacation days, and some people are already using them. But we also implemented the T-Bel PBL certificate requirement. So we have a T-Bel PBL workgroup, as you can see on the below, where we created a course about basic knowledge about T-Bel. And that will, that is now requirement to be an operator, because that, this is kind of gives insights how all of these task cards coming from. And this basically has made, like if you've seen, T-Bel PBL workgroup has also posted the third part of a process, like a quarterly report. You noticed maybe there was like three new students that passed. So with this one month between when we wrote the report, and now I think we have six completed. So it's getting updated quite fast. And probably there will be more to come, because half of the operators are not still certified. Oh yeah, new workgroup started regarding Treasury. It's about Treasury Automation Workgroup. And this is going to be a monthly. For now, the next month for Treasury Guild Automation will be like a vacation or no meetings. So in September, we will have two Automation Workgroup sessions. So pay attention to the Treasury Guild channel I will be sharing. And all of that information is later can be found on the calendar. All of that is updated. Yeah, and one thing here also is Knowledge Base Workgroup. And in that workgroup, basically, we are collecting all of different workgroup assets and resources and links. And then we decide if they should be go to Gitbook or not. And we have basically working on organizing all of the information we have been doing in Ambassador Program. And this recent month, we basically finished the asynchronous process of how to organize that. Because previously, when we started Technology Space, we assumed we're gonna do it in calls, have few calls, and then quickly finish up the rest. But we realized that there is so many perspectives and ways to see how the asset should be organized. So now it's more collective, more people are looking at it, and so it's like a full process that organizes these assets. And finally, we also tested our first organizing GPT. So we have now Singularity Net Ambassador Program has now ChatGPT license and specialized GPT that is meant to kind of request if we're to organize that item. And then AI gives quite a good result. In future, we are looking to now also train it with our own data, like our own insights. Because with our co-organizing process, we started also collecting information, why are we putting these assets in where we are? Yep, T-Bel PBL I kind of went through, and Process Guild is basically our awesome activities and new insights and ideas or something quick we could implement or tools we could use. And that's it from my side. If I missed something, then I will let you know in the Discord.
So thanks a lot. Alright, let's see what happens on the next slide. I'm going in blind. There's Strategy.
On my side, the slide didn't change though.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see any changing the slide too. Okay.
I'm not sure if I can, I mean, I can do another slide, but that won't do much.
It looks like then the screen is frozen.
Alright, let me just reshare them. Can do. If I find the right better?
Yes, you can see now.
Alright, cool. Yeah, so I guess for Strategy, Ayo, the floor is yours.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Peter. Good to be here, everybody. So for the Strategy Guild, it's been an interesting quarter. And the Guild has basically around two things to do. And then, and then we have already started on board. So there is the research, which is supposed to be a, an exercise into getting clear insights into the expectations of members, contributors, and co-contributors of the program into what they think Strategic Guild should be about. So that the, the functions of the Guild is a direct reflection of the thoughts of the co-contributors. And so we began that, obviously, by making sure that the contributions to the questions are open to everyone. And this is quite early into the, the exercise, but I mean, but it's already begun. And then the, the other thing that the Guild embarked on, as I mean, stated in the, in the budget, is the workshop. And the workshop is focused on guilds and workgroups that are outbound. And these are workgroups and guilds whose, whose contributions in the ecosystem are for, mostly for the public. And that's, that's the video workgroup, the writers' workgroup, and the marketing guild. And so we had the ideation session. The workshop will be four sessions. The first session is the ideation session. And then the second and third sessions are for execution, phase one and phase two. And then the fourth session would be for the reports, adoption, or adaptation. And we had the first session, which is the addition session, at the, at the last meeting, which was twenty ninth of, twenty ninth of July, I mean, just, just yesterday. And from the, from the feedback was, was a very, very collaborative and interesting workshop. I mean, the, 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 the feedback were, the feedback were quite good and encouraging. And, and the workshop had representatives from all of those three workgroups and guilds about, about several people who were, were there at sites, the general Strategy Guild and other people who were around for the session. So, so for the Strategy Guild, it's quite straightforward what the Strategy Guild will be reporting in, 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 in the, in the Town Hall updates, because I mean, it's going to be focused on just the items in its slow start budget. And by the way of, another interesting thing with the Strategy Guild is the, the members, the requirement to become a member of Strategy Guild, which was a direct input of, of concerns and direct input of what people thought should be about the Strategy Guild. And, and so you would have co-members of Strategy Guild having to be co-members of other Guild. And so, so so far, it's been a very welcome idea, and that's how it's, it's, it's been. So yeah, so thank you so much. That, that is so far with, for the Strategy Guild. I hope we are between the three minutes timeframe. Thank you, Peter.
I have to admit, I was not keeping track exactly. Thanks a lot. Good stuff. That does bring us to Onboarding, and we have Gorga present. All yours.
Yep, thank you, Peter. Hello, hello, everyone. I'm Gorga from Onboarding Workgroup. This month, we developed a skill matrix where group members provided input on the skills they already have and the ones they want to learn. We did a thorough analysis of the matrix and come, come up with a list of the most desired skills. Also, I put the, I put the document link on the chat right now, so you can, you guys can see the document. And the second update is, as a follow-up to the skill matrix, we will be having a session on the fifteenth of August, where already Tempest will encourage a training session. This session will be based on the skills decided upon by the workgroup best on the output of the skills matrix. For the next update is additionally, the Onboarding Workgroup has selected a new set of onboarders who are tasked with the responsibility of onboarding new people into the group and program in general. And new onboarding process as well channels are live on Singularity Net Discord. For the selected onboarders, they are Lord Kizi, CJ Frankie, Lady Tempest, Funny, and also me. Congratulations to those selected. And the last update from Onboarding Workgroup is we have also as a workgroup been able to trim our budget to fit the required lowering presented by the Treasury. Also, I put the budget link on the chat, so you can guys can see it.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing.
Yeah. That, that's all I can say for monthly updates from the Onboarding Workgroup. Thanks everyone.
And you, well done. Then next on the list is Governance Workgroup. Technically, I can give an update there if somebody else wants to. Alright, yeah, Vanessa, I do have similar symptoms on what we discussed over the whole month on Governance Workgroup. Basically, based on, for, for today's workgroup session, the plan was to have a retrospective or process, the retrospective we did last, last week's Town Hall on the Q three budgeting process. That will need to happen another time, because we had a very interesting and important discussion on topics like how budget constraints impact workgroups. And yeah, they can deal with this. Topics like quality control and how to scale in the future, if there's more people joining. Well, you know, with, with finite budgets, you can't simply, yeah, support infinite amounts of people. And yeah, topics like this will be carried over to the workgroup syncing call on this Thursday. And I think for, for governance in general, it will remain relevant. There might be some other workgroups, you know, when it's relevant, they, they will push over. And yeah, I have to admit, on earlier weeks, Ayo, I'm well aware you made most of the meeting summaries. Sorry to put you on the spot like this, but would there be any topics you feel were addressed or common themes over the meetings?
Yeah, quorum for governance was one of the critical discussions about, about governance for, for budget consensus. Yeah, that was, that was one very important. And then, which also led to the conversation about engagement, about how to improve engagements. So what, I mean, what factors, why have co-contributors not engaging or participating in governance? Yeah, so those were two important. I mean, of course, there was also the conversation about, about, about the process itself, about the governance process itself, its ratios, and how our forms should be or not be. And which, I think everything sums into getting more co-contributors to participate in governance. And then deciding what, how, if few numbers mean represents the, the general outlook of the larger number, I mean, everyone or, or he. There should be some type of quorum to qualify that, I mean, particular. Because of, because there was a time, of course, in the last governance budget session where there are only four, I mean, total input to a particular budget. So yeah, so those were about, about three critical things that, that came up with, with, in the, in the governance.
Yeah, thanks a lot. And you're right, indeed. Alright, looking at the clock, we're halfway into the slot, so I'll have to speed up a little, I feel. On the workgroup syncing call, which is a month ago by now. I see this on the slide. Thanks, Tavvo, for putting it there. I'm not sure if I can put a proper recap.
My, my net, my network went off. I hope, I, I hope I got it in. I just saw that, alright, alright.
Well, good, good, no worries. And thanks. Um. Maybe I'll get back to the workgroup sync and go in a bit, if I can grab the recap for that. Yeah, and in a way, the Open Governance Workgroup sessions, they have quite overlapped on topics with Governance Workgroup in a way they, they weren't intended as just having another second workgroup call. But in practice, it does look more or less like they are shifting to that. Not quite sure if that's the end result we should be going for, because two workgroup calls a week is a lot, but Tavvo, free free?
I did feel like this both the workgroup syncing call and Open Gov were basically filling the space of like tension now. Like every tension we had, and we had like a lot of conflicts in proposals, and we wanted to get it through. So using these for remating and helping people to improve their proposal was really like common sense, I think. So right now, we don't have any proposal discussion, so it will be interesting to see what are the conversations going to be changing to.
Yes, very much so. And, and yeah, also related to that, we'll have to see if the weekly Open Governance goal will remain, you know, relevant. Alright, then skipping a bit, or not skipping, moving on to Archive Workgroup. Vanessa?
Yeah, that was quick. Didn't realize we were there already. Alright, so first of all, as ever, I'll post in the chat Archive Workgroup's GitHub project board, so you can have a look at the different things we're working on, and of course, a link to the archives itself. So yeah, this month, among other things, we've been kind of working on some sharing of our work, sort of preparing some stuff on that. So there's going to be a presentation on the work Ubio's been doing with LLMs. And that's coming next week, I think, with SA and Ecamini. And we're also looking at doing something about our approach to open source in the autumn. We're not sure if we want to just do that in a town hall, or if it would be cool to have a separate meeting for all the people in the program who are interested in open source as an ethos. I remember when I've been transcribing, not transcribing, archiving old town halls. There was one not so long ago where there was a really interesting discussion on open source. So there's a lot of interest, and I just think it might be good to have a separate meeting, so we're going to think about that. The other thing we've been working quite hard on is documenting what we refer to as the backlog in like capital letters. This is the material from before Archives Workgroup even existed. And interesting, we found a really interesting anomaly. It was Gorga who spotted it. Ambassador Town Hall on the seventh of February twenty twenty three was number thirty-three. And somehow, February the fourteenth, the week later, got labeled number thirty-five. So we're out of sync. And when we celebrated Town Hall number one hundred a little while ago, it wasn't. It was actually number ninety-nine. But anyway, archivally, we decided to leave the ring the way it is, with a note on the document for February the fourteenth that it happened. And it'll just have to become a quirk of the program that we are one number ahead of what it actually is. Yeah, so we're on holiday now until the fourth of September. It's not really a holiday. It's just a chance to catch up on all the async work we've all got. So we'll see you then. And in between times, you can always reach us on Discord.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to be able to make up a nonsense reason for skipping on thirty-four. That's completely by accident. Okay, good to know. And cool. That brings us to education. And if I'm correct, SA, can I put you on the spot for that? I saw that, yeah, you are here. Cool. Or if anybody else feels better positioned, feel free to. We do need someone. Alright, we'll get that sorted in chat. And potentially do it a bit later. Next on the list would be R and D. And Kizi, yes. All yours.
Alright, can you guys?
Yes, all good.
Alright, so this month in R and D, we got to look at the concerns that were presented by the community and also some internal concerns as regards to why we couldn't provide deliverables. So now we got to analyze each concern in the meeting. So um now we got to analyze each concern in the meeting. Then now we presented a new um operational process going forward. So um firstly, um. We're gonna have um. They're gonna open applications that's coming next month. Uh so we're gonna open up for proposals, so where committee members can actually make um submit their proposal requests. Now, um please know that there's gonna be a maximum allocation on our budgets. And um the rewards are gonna be spread across milestones. So uh once you complete the milestone, you get rewarded for it. And also, um there's gonna be um. A guitar i- issue and a repo attached to each proposal. So now, these proposals are gonna go through um a review process to ensure that they follow the um latest ki- criterias. For um for for proposal um applications. So once the review team have reviewed each proposal. Then there was gonna be a committee voting. Thereby, the committee gets to um decide what proposal. Um the few that should um that is more beneficial to the ambassador program. So um once that has been concluded, then the uh uh um. The development starts. So um once the development is done, there's gonna be a visual presentation in the town hall. And also, um there's gonna be other presentations uh in the Discord server. By using infographics and templates. So once all this has been provided. Then um there's gonna be, the rewards are gonna be distributed. So we're gonna distribute rewards once the proposal is fully completed. Um also for the voting process, so we are, we are. We are, I don't understand why by co-contributors are required to vote, only co-contributors are required to vote for proposals. And um for you to even um apply or for you to submit a proposal, you must have a co-contributor in your team. To define that co-contributors possess um um quite a good knowledge of the ecosystem in the ambassador program at large. So for you to submit the proposal, you must um include a co-contributor in your team. And only co-contributors will be um liable to vote for um proposals. And also, um in this system, it's gonna be one person, one vote. So this ensures an equal representation. And. There's gonna be a column of um thirty to forty percent participation for eligible voters. So um. So once we are, once we are done with um certain of the blueprints for this, we're gonna publish the documents and open applications to the community. Thereby, everyone gets to submit their proposals. So please be expected something from us. And also, uh Clint is gonna give him a brief um. A brief presentation right now. So Peter, please could you grant him close access?
Yes, you have it.
All right, so Clint.
Yeah, hi, hi, everyone. Yeah, well, I I think I I just did um. Fix the link in the chat there for people to go look at it, because I mean, I just need like one minute and forty five seconds to just walk through this. And if I do a presentation, it's gonna take a lot more time. Yeah, so um we had a research for um an inclusivity or a research for inclusivity. With for individuals with disabilities within the singularity net um ecosystem. So it's it's a very um. Concise um paperwork that, you know, I just encourage everyone whatever to have a look at. So I'll just be surrounding my presentation around the abstracts of the whole research. So now, our research investigated inclusivity for individuals with disabilities within singularity net ecosystem, you know. Um and we focused on identifying prevalent disabilities, understanding challenges and proposing solutions to enhance accessibility and community support. Now, uh we utilize a non-experimental sort of study, you know, using Google Forms. And we integrated both actual and hypothetical responses, right, to comprehensively assess perceptions and experiences of persons um with. Various small disabilities within the ecosystem. So we got the survey data and we analyzed this data using uh Google Sheets, you know, uh Matlud, Liban, Pandas and Python. Yeah, so um I findings did reveal that um forty nine percent or forty nine point two percent of our respondents. Um felt very included. And then we also had some decompositions of twenty one point four percent of persons who took part in the survey. Who felt lost, like totally unclear from everything that happened within that's been happening in the ecosystem. And we had an in-between value as well of twenty one point four percent, people um feeling. Excuse me. They they felt really included and we also had um fourteen point three percent of persons as well who felt that they were not carried along at all. Now. We highlighted accessibility barriers.
I lost it. I think, yep, I think so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Can you hear me? Sorry, I I lost connection. Okay, yeah, we can. Yeah, so as I was saying, we were able to identify um. Specific challenges to include um sensory overload, you know, communication difficulties and. You know, disabilities uh difficulties in using uh the interfaces we have, particularly with Discord, the Discord we have. Low persons complained that the Discord channel's configuration was too complex. And especially for the group that had um the A D H D. They couldn't really navigate the things we do with the um full level participation. Yeah, so we're able to come up with certain recommendations, you know, around um enhancing platform accessibility. You know, fostering mental health awareness and restructuring um our present community engagement strategies to create a more supportive environment. And we believe that um these studies um will contribute to advancing um inclusivity. Not just in the singularity net ecosystem, but other technical systems as well. Yeah, so I want to stop there. We've got the full research there. You could just go look at it. There's a lot more to this. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, uh Clements. So I think that's all from our side.
Awesome, and the great deliverable. Can't wait to dive in. Um it appears to be just on my side, but for me, the the documents, uh tables, the figures, let's say. Uh so the pie charts and stuff, they don't load, but that that's for others, they seem to load, so that's fully on my side. Um, yeah, curious.
Sorry, Peter, I didn't get that.
Uh no worries, I'll take it to Discord. Um but for me, the the images are not loading. I don't know, so far.
Yeah, 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 maybe you just have to give it a couple of time, man. They will.
It'd be fine. Cool. All right, uh then let me grab the correct slides. Um. And share some screen. All right, that brings us to A I ethics. And Vanessa, back to you again.
All right, yeah. Um so for those who don't know, A I Ethics Workgroup is a relatively new group. Which works alongside a group from the foundation, which is currently called the Global A I Ethics Initiative or G E I. But it seemed to be renamed via a poll. You might have seen the request for name suggestions a couple of weeks ago. And the poll will be shared from tomorrow, as far as I know, so you'll be able to vote on giving it a slightly more euphonious name. But anyway, the G E I, as it's currently called, focuses on researching with the general public about what their attitudes are. To A I ethics and how they think A I ethics should be governed. Because often, as we all know, it's all about big business a lot of the times, and ordinary people's voices are just not heard enough. So the workgroup is kind of in existence to collaborate with this and try to do initiatives ourselves, which work with this. Um this month, we've been focused on drafting some documents to outline how this research should be carried out and how it should be done ethically. So our research strategy, ethics strategy and knowledge management strategies are written. And they're currently with their editing teams. And some really interesting ideas have come up about how we should research ethically with the general public. And how we should manage the information that we get. So if you have a look at our GitHub project board, which I'm just about to drop a link to. You'll be able to, if you look at the relevant issues, you'll be able to see the kind of half-drafted strategies and have a read. But um when they're finished and edited, we'll share them properly and sort of outline some of the interesting topics that have come out of it. And another thing we've been up to this month is planning to conduct some interviews of our own. Um in members' own communities, so we'll be sort of working face to face where people live. And trying to do a bit of interviewing of friends and family and so on to get their views on A I ethics. If you're interested in all this and you haven't really jumped in, um come along to a meeting. Our next one is this coming Monday. Or you can hop into the channel, um the Discord channel. But yeah, for the next couple of weeks, our focus, as I said earlier in the meeting, is gonna be on A G I twenty four. And we really need a bit of help, if we're honest. Um we've got a pre-conference event on the seventh of August. And we're looking for Zoom facilitators, documenters, blog post writers and more. And at A G I twenty four itself, on the thirteenth to the sixteenth of August. Our slots are from seventeen hundred to nineteen hundred U T C. And we need people to help us run a chill-out room and to run some interviews. So I'm gonna post the details in the chat again, and please do hop on and join up. You don't have to already be a member or active in the workgroup to get involved. And it'd just be really cool to have an ambassador presence in the virtual event. So if you can help us out, please do.
Awesome, thanks a lot. Um I do see a placeholder on sixteen thirty U T C. Is that confirmed?
Sorry, what? Say again.
Um on that uh virtual roundtable on the August seventh, I see a placeholder at sixteen thirty U T C. I was wondering if that's accurate. Okay.
Yeah, that is. As far as, as far as we know, unless anything changes dramatically in the next few days.
All right. I hope this helicopter flying over doesn't make too much noise. Um yeah, I won't put you uh through another uh go at the archival workgroup. We went there. Is there a representative in the room on education? Figured I'd give it another try since um we didn't get there yet. And if not. We'll have to skip that. Um R and D we did. I noticed some duplications along the slides, but that's fine. Um next one would be uh gamers guilds. See who we have in the room.
Yeah, sorry, Peter. Um just before that, I just reshared the link to the research in the chat, so just in case the ones you had was not um opening also, I guess this would. Make much sense. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thanks a lot. Uh let's see, gamers guilds. Uh what do we have in the room? Anyone stepping up to give an update? Let's see.
All right, um let me do that. But I'm not really prepared for it. Um. We are currently um working on. Do all um some other guilds and workgroups to be integrated into Roblox uh for the ambassador program. So um we've finished um the video workgroup, also the onboarding workgroup, those um workgroups have been completed. So um now we are currently working on the treasury guild, um the D W P L, um Archives Workgroup. And R and D, so also it's education guild. So um that's where we are now. And we're also trying to see uh how we could um shift our meetings from Discord to Roblox itself. So going forward, we might be having meetings in Roblox Studio. So we both play it, so just a quick update on that.
Awesome. And I do recommend everybody who hasn't checked out uh to check out. Uh I think on the gamers guild channel on Discord, there will be, should be some links here and there. Um, yeah, thanks a lot. Uh S A, update hasn't been given for education. No, it has not. I tried calling you out earlier. But um if you want to, you're very welcome to give an update.
Um, okay, hi, everyone. So for education workgroup. Where we are at at the moment is um we're still working on the uh ambassador's um certification program. So after the some of the reviews, it was saying that um some of the content needed some. Rework, so um that the task has been assigned to a to people to work on that one. So hopefully, the A C P should be, you know, fully uh fully worked upon. But uh you know, we don't really have um uh control over um. People's, um what's it called now? People's um. Um people's ability to, you know, um deliver based on timeframes and whatnot. But um the team has been pushing, Osium and um Slate has been ensuring that everyone actually, you know, um. Be at the top of their game. So um also the A I for beginners project, which is um. Been had been um led by myself, is already in the works, already created the blueprint and set up the Notion page. And um by um this coming week, it should should be set in motion. And then um Kenishi was taxed with um the presentation that. He put in the proposal to to work on. Um yeah, I think that's what I have at the top of my head at the moment. If there's any other updates, probably. Um Slate will be the best person to put out there.
It was quite music. Uh thanks a lot for stepping up there. Um, all right, where are we clockwise? Seven more minutes. Five more workgroups. That's not a lot of minutes per workgroup. Uh let's see. Well, it's just uh got through them, right? Um starting off with marketing. Let's see who in the room could represent. Feel free to step up and speak up.
Hi, um everybody. Uh this is I O. I'm here, so um. And um speak for marketing guild. Uh if if um no one else uh wants to speak about marketing guild, I could just run the updates. Okay, so um I see no hands, so we just just assume that um that's a vote of confidence to go ahead. All right, so for the marketing guild, uh S A already mentioned my name. Okay, that's interesting. Uh huh. All right, so uh for the marketing guild, it's been an interesting quarter as well. Uh for the marketing guild, uh it started with uh identifying. Who were going to be uh for marketing um guild members. And and this were for, these were um. Chosen based on interest into people who thought that they were um they wanted to be marketing guild lead. And this was um somewhere into the end of the last quarter. And so this set of people uh formed, brought together ideas for how the marketing guild should operate. And when, once that was done and put into budget, then there were other group of people, about four or five, who also joined uh as marketing. Tax forced. I mean, these were people who didn't think they wanted to be marketing guild lead, but but thought that they have quite a number of things to offer. The guild. Now, together, all of those people are formed. What we now know as the marketing guild hall. And now this is uh this has been further uh delineated into operations, analytic and analytics. And then um comms and um and creatives, graphic designers and stuff like that. And so uh the marketing guild is using quite um what you would call a very um centralized structure. Uh that might quite um that I think that really may be um. Very unique in the in the program uh currently. Uh I can, I can, at the tip of my finger, identify another workgroup. I mean, another guild using this system.
And so um you have different people handling different things. So for the Marketing Guild, the, the most critical part of the thing. Of the things that Marketing Guild has been able to do now is to create clear KPIs for. What the roles and responsibilities of every one of these people entails. And it is based on these metrics that um, that every one of the tasks will be measured. And which is also a very, very good one for Marketing Guild. So. Uh, I think that in the, in the coming months, there'll be quite a lot um for the Marketing Guild will bring as far as updates are concerned. But um bulk of what Marketing Guild has done so far is to create a solid base. And, and, and I think that um that summarizes um what Marketing Guild has been able to do, considering the, 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 um, the. The burden of, you know, having to, you know, move from needing a Marketing Guild lead, which, you know, it took some time. To the point where we now have a working guild. And the, and it's, it's, it's been interesting. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that um a lot of people uh in the Marketing Guild quite agree. So yeah, so that's basically the summary from Marketing Guild. Where we've set up for amazing, amazing uh quarter. Thank you.
And thank you for stepping up there. Nice, uh, two minutes remain, four work groups remain. So we're gonna speed up things, I guess. Um, anybody from writer's side wants to give um a quick update? With Kenichi not in the room, I'm not sure who to ask or, but feel free to step up. Maybe this comes in a bit. Not gonna wait for minutes and minutes. Uh, then moving on to video. Surely there's a representative of Video Work Group in the room?
Um, yes, there is.
Oh, my. Yours?
Um, okay. Hello, everyone. Name is Alfred. I'll be represented. So um shortly, I'll be. Even as a free. Up to more, more than absolutely are conspired in the month of July. So, um, first off. Hey, guys, hear me?
Uh, hearing, yes. Uh, audio quality is low. Not gonna lie. If, if there's any way of, I don't know what, to increase audio quality, that would be very welcome.
Alright, can you guys hear me better now?
Much, much better. Thanks a lot. Yes.
Oh, alright. So firstly, um, Video Work Group, we've been able to create a couple of videos. Which we've um successfully uploaded or posted on um. Social media platforms. Um, for the month, we've been able to post um four long videos. And five town hall videos, and um five short clips. And lastly, town hall summaries for the month of July. Um, moving forward. The Video Work Group member, we are trying to set up um a more. Efficient strategy that can work for every one of us well to achieve a more prolific results. So. We're trying to set up a team, a review team, actually. The aim of this team is to ensure that our videos, our scripts. Even up to the ammunitions are properly edited and corrected before publication. Um, this team is to help modulate and regulate our content, more or less saying. You, you have to take time to audit and edit each content before it's being posted to the public. Um. And just to leverage the time allocated to this orbit, almost a, that'll be all for now from the Video Work Group. Our meetings are on Fridays, um, by five PM UTC plus one. So for more of this and what's happening on the Video Work Group, please feel free to join in. You're welcome at any time. Thank you very much. That'll be all for my ends.
Thank you, Alfred. Good stuff. Um, let's see, on the Latam Guild, uh, Guillermo is, uh, he asked me to give the update because right now he's traveling to the um. A D N, uh, Argentina Digital Nation uh event in Buenos Aires. Uh, so he can't give the update. Um, well, that's, that's one of the main um things they're working on to uh go out there and represent. Um, singularity net during that event. And additionally, uh, two other things, uh, the final selection of uh the core contributors for the guild has concluded. There's now um five people representing Argentina, Mexico and Brazil. And additionally, on the um, uh, the uh event, already mentioned a couple of times on August seventh, the, the virtual roundtable. Uh, the Latin Guild was also asked to host the table. So yeah, they're working to uh, to prepare for that as well. And yeah, that's just a quick update on Latam. And then last but certainly not least on the list is African Guild. Uh, and that's gonna be Casey? I'm not sure. Um, I see you, I'm yet.
Oh, no, no, it's not me. Sorry.
Yeah, um, you know, is it time for African Guild? I, I couldn't hear. Alright, alright. So I was supposed to give the town hall. Yeah, so um, good evening, everyone. Um, can you hear me, guys? Yep, can you hear me? Okay, okay, yeah. So um for the African uh Guild, yeah, of course, um. We've had some very encouraging um strides um the past month. And one of which is, um, we have been very focused in building um a strong operational uh structure for the Guild. Um, as we're still growing. And we have developed um an onboarding framework for members joining the Guild. Of course, and then this is really in collaboration with the um members of the African Guild who are members of the onboarding work group. Alright, so the onboarding process is gonna take the, the African uh cultural context into consideration as well. Yeah, now, um, we have also been able to successfully touch base in more African countries. Yeah. So we have people joining us from Congo D R, from Ghana, from Cameroon and from Rwanda as well. Um, we have also been able to successfully complete the second phase of our continental market penetration research. And we're currently uh developing strategies um to engage more communities, you know. Um, for strategic partnership efforts with the Guild. Um, we've also introduced the Members Collective proposal um templates where um we provide a framework where we could support members of the Guild. With, you know, uh, initiatives that I get at, you know, propagating the objective of the African Guild. And then um, yeah, we're also collaborating with the AI Ethics Work Group to organize an in-person events. Um, precisely Nigeria, um, which will be the Singularity Net African Youth AI Ethics Expo. And the preparations are currently ongoing and then the community will be um more informed when it's due. Yeah, that's pretty much mine. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Alright, um, looking at the clock, we're five minutes over. Not terrible at all, I have to say. Uh, quickly checking the slides. I think this is it. This is it so far. Um, well, the next town hall will be Tuesday, month day, twenty twenty-four at eighteen UTC. Uh, it's gonna be next week. Sorry, can't help myself uh at this time of day. Um. A quick one in chat, there's a link to an uh earlier broadcast today of Sophia Vers. They do um built-in public events. It's gonna be uh only online for another hour-ish. So if you're interested to see what uh Sophia Vers is up to. It's, it's quite a good one. It's six minutes or something. So yeah, I, I strongly suggest um clicking that link in chat and uh checking it out in the coming hour. And. I think that concludes the call more or less. Let's have a quick check in the room if there's any topics we should be touching on. Um. If there are any, they better be short because we are over the slot already. And yeah, want to respect everybody's time. Complete silence. Alright, um. Yeah, then that's uh gonna conclude today's call.
So Peter, I, I just wanted to say that it, it does appear that um the final town halls are usually the most interesting town halls. I don't know why. Yeah. So we have got people joining us for the first time today. I think um they had the best of experiences. And I hope new persons join us only at the end of that, you know, town hall. So they get to have excellent experiences like this one.
Yeah, fair. I, I, I mean, I don't have the perspective of a new joiner, but I could also imagine this being a bit of a, you know, blast of information coming your way. Uh, seeing we pretty much cover all work groups. And there's a lot of them. Um. Yeah, well, uh, I'm, I'm gonna conclude the recording and um for the new faces in the room, uh, you're very much welcome to uh stick around a little bit if you happen to have any questions or any. Anything, want to chill a little, uh, we can. But uh for the recording at least, I'm gonna wrap it up for now. And yeah, thanks all for uh. Being here, sharing the progress and sharing your time. And yeah, good stuff. Keep it up.